For a password.
To you and just a moment, uh, actually, I think I remember it. It's capital. M S T.
Wow, uh, is that what it says?
No, capital. M S T G.
Oh, oh, on municipal complex wifi M S.
Yes, and the password is.
Oh, wait, wait, wait. You got guess and you got it and you got the you got M S T guess. Is that the one?
Yes.
The guess.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, cuz you got the tour.
Yes.
Or is the in crowd and then there's the guesses.
Yes.
I'll give you a guess.
Yes.
I guess. Yes, I'll be guess. Um, uh, where's the password?
Uh, capital M S T.
Oh, that's a good one. There will pass.
Yes.
Okay.
Capital G.
Capital G.
And then small letters. U E S T.
I don't tolerate that.
And then dollar sign, dollar sign.
Wow. Okay. That's cuz you guys are big folks. Uh, this is great.
Okay. See, I will just. Login last time.
Now, that's a quality soon. Something.
So is there an application for, uh?
Now, did you log in?
I did.
Yeah, something happened. We want to try to make.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I'm not seeing your.
Oh, that's nice. Oh, okay.
Just before we. So it is, um, North Hill Square considering an application for a grant to.
No, no. They don't need. Jay answered that. No.
Who presents the primary on that?
Of course, sorry. Yes, I'm ready. Everybody else ready? One thing. Okay. All right, so today is July twenty fourth. Welcome to the business meeting of the Middle Smithfield Township Supervisors. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay. I'll make the motion to approve the agenda.
Sir.
Any comments or questions? All in favor? Aye. I make a motion to approve the minutes of July tenth with some minor non-material. Corrections to some, a few typos. Okay, second, any comments or questions? All in favor? Aye. Uh, Pat Armstrong, can you hear us well?
I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Our solicitor, Pat Armstrong, is on Zoom. Thank you very much for joining us, uh, while you're away. Can we please have a report of executive session?
Sure, the board met briefly before this evening's meeting, uh, to discuss executive session items. No decisions were made, no votes were taken.
Thank you. Uh, is there a public comment on non-agenda items?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Wow, I, I didn't think I'd go to that so fast. Um, oh, let me give you this.
Okay.
Um, what this is. Is this is from the, um. It's an example of what they do in, uh, New York City for Community Board Professional Development Training. So this is an example of the.
Community Leadership Training Series.
Right. Um, yeah, that this came about. For this, um, well. Why am I here? Uh, well, I've spoken to Lena a couple of times about how horrible the situation, so, uh, in visual events. Uh, you know, according to the directors for HOA.
And I'm having a hard time hearing you. Can you please speak up?
Absolutely.
Thank you. And start with your name, too.
Right, my name is Jacob Morris. I'm a resident of Leesha Lands in. Uh, am I enunciating properly? Um. Uh, so I've spoken with the net. Twice. On how horrible the situation, so in visual ends. Uh, our roads don't have potholes anymore. They're craters. Literally, the cars. Sink down. To the bottom of the cars. Um. Our board of directors is. Worse than dysfunctional. Uh. And it's just. A total mess anyway. Oh, and then told me there's not much that you guys can do about internal workings of HOA's and the condition of the roads. So, um, but she did mention that there would be a meeting tonight.
And also the C A I.
C A I.
Yeah, that's the Trade Industry Organization for, uh, HOAs.
Right, right. And there's things that. We can do. You know, including putting our, our road dues in escrow. Don't just man having it managed by court and so on. So there's a lot of things. Financial documents that we're entitled to minutes, et cetera, et cetera. I'm not. Here to bring that to your attention. Um. I'm not concerned about that right this moment. What I was thinking about was. What could you guys do? As township. And so I came up with this analogy, which is. Uh, that. I would like you, you guys to consider. Exploring. Offering. Professional development. The HOA directive members. All, all that are within your jurisdiction. Uh. For. Different county classes, whether it's Robert's Rules of Order. Whether it's, uh, requirements in terms of responsibility to H O, to the H O A shareholders. Uh, whether it's financial management. Uh, different professional development. Uh, I have a funny feeling. That. At least one and probably more than one of the, uh. Elected officials that have, uh, shared jurisdiction, uh. This township. Uh, and over this township would be delighted. To give you guys a grant. To, uh, experiment. With offer production of development to HOA developers. That's what they call a possible win-win. Do you guys like that? Exploring.
Anything's worth exploring, especially the grant part.
Yeah, yeah, and, uh, I'd like to, uh, offer to, uh, assist. Yeah, I actually helped. The Manhattan Borough President for all of both, uh, two professional workshops. In New York City for the community boards. And, uh, I think I could probably help. With the development, one or two professional workshops. For HOA board members here.
Thank you.
Where I. Constantly extol the benefits of living here. And seeming overnosed.
Thank you very much, Mr. Morris.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're cool.
Or, oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, you're good. I hope you guys got it. It's, it's interesting.
Thank you. Send me the link to that. I wrote it down.
Uh, I'll be delighted.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Uh, is there anyone else with any other public comment on non-agenda items, either here or online? On Zoom. Okay, moving on. Uh, just a few announcements. Um, you only got a week left. For Christmas in July. Um, so there's flyers over on the side. We have twenty-two shops that are offering, uh, discounts for July. Um, memory makers is August ninth. Thank you to everybody who, uh, responded to R S V P. But more importantly, before that is Community Day, August second. Who can believe it's next Saturday? Not this coming Saturday, but next Saturday. Um, the board congratulates Eagle Scout Trent Corolo, our newest Eagle Scout. This Sunday is Matty's Angels over at Eagles Rest Cellar. Uh, Matty's Angels was a, uh, one of the first Person of the Year, um, winners. And they are a local charity that gives back to, they're in the community for the community and give back to the community. So that would be a good event. To attend. On July thirty-first, at the Community and Cultural Center, that's a Thursday night, there is a free CPR class. Conducted by Bushkill Emergency Corps, so you can learn how to save lives. And that's all I've got.
Uh, I'm sorry, repeat that one about the, uh. Uh, the CPR, is that what it is?
Yes, it's, it's a hands.
Free access only, so it's a very friendly course, probably that I'm hour long and, uh. You'll, uh, you'll leave smarter when you can.
And what date?
Uh, Thursday.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
The thirty-fourth, six-thirty at the Community Center. Thank you. I will bring, uh, eight pads so you're. The Community Center, uh, I'm tired of all the lack of. But please do call in so that. I'm kind of prepared.
Okay.
For the number.
Okay. Uh, and that's it for that. Unless you have anything. That brings us to the Treasurers Report.
Correspondence, no?
No. No, thank you.
Uh, motion from our general fund, eighty-nine thousand, fifty-seven dollars and eighty cents.
Sorry. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
All right. Motion from our sewer account, fifty-two thousand, six hundred and sixty-five dollars and forty-one cents.
I'll second. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
All right. Motion from our, uh, fire tax account, one hundred and eight thousand.
Sir. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
All right. Motion from our EMS tax account, twenty-seven thousand, five hundred.
Second, any comments or questions? All in favor?
All right. Motion from Liquid Fuels Account, six hundred and seventy-two dollars and nine cents.
Sir. Any comments or, did you have a question? Any comments or questions? All in favor?
All right.
Aye.
That's it.
Okay, Solicitors Report.
Uh, thank you. The first item under my report is to formally authorize the execution. Of the Blue Ridge Cable Technologies Incorporated Right-of-Way Agreement. If the board recalls, Blue Ridge reached out a while ago. Looking to secure a right-of-way agreement, uh, specific to their poles located on township property. Uh, there's three of them and they're, and they're listed and, and depicted specifically. On the draft right-of-way agreement as well as the exhibit. If you remember, initially, it was a very general. Proposed right-of-way description. We requested that they get more specific, identify the poles specifically and provide a better. Plan, and they've done that, and they've agreed to the latest revisions from my office. Uh, so now it's. It's ripe for you to consider and authorize the execution of it.
So. Sir.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
All right.
Thanks. The next item under my agenda is the zoning ordinance amendment. Everyone, I think, is fairly familiar. Uh, with this comprehensive zoning amendment, uh, that the township's been working on. We did just recently, in the last, uh, I'd say, week or two. Received comments back from the Middle Smithfield Township Planning Commission as well as the County Planning Commission. The Middle Smithfield Towny, or the Middle Smithfield Township Planning Commission, there's only three comments. Um, and I guess the question is, before I get to in, in depth, do you want to go through this? I guess we can go through the township's PC letter pretty quickly, but do we want to go through the county's review tonight, or do you want to consider it a little bit more? And have this maybe more?
At the workshop tomorrow.
Yeah.
Yeah, we would like to see the county comments at the, at our border supervisors workshop tomorrow. Which is eight o'clock.
Okay, perfect. Uh, so do you even want to talk about them at all, or just? Note that we received the comments back from both the township and the county planning commissions. We're going to review them, take them under consideration and potentially make. Potentially make some additional changes to the draft zoning ordinance, uh, moving forward. I mean, that, is, is that what you're looking to do tonight?
Correct.
Okay. Do we want to talk about that anymore, or should I move on?
I think you just described it.
I think you told the story.
Okay. All right, the next item under my report is the Saldo Amendment. I suspect. This is in relation to, if you remember, you have a Saldo draft amendment. Both incorporating, uh, fire key fee, review fees, as well as, uh, adjusting the number of plans. Uh, that, that applicants, uh, submit. Um. Michelle, have we got, we, we made changes to that ordinance, draft ordinance. Send them back to the county and township B C. I don't know if we've gotten comments back from them yet. We sent it probably late June, right?
I think it was late June, and I don't recall if county came in.
So, so really, I think the reason it's on your agenda this evening is, you know, we've provided them. The opportunity to comment. I don't know if we will get comments because the only change we made. Was the number of plans in response to the township's planning commission comment. Uh, so we may not get comments from the county or the township.
I thought we did. I, I thought we did, and they were favorable and short.
Oh, okay, then maybe I didn't get a copy of it.
They acknowledged the change we made.
Okay, so then the next, the next. Action for you to consider is authorizing it to be advertised for a public hearing and adoption.
So moved.
Sir.
Any comments or questions? All in favor? Aye.
Okay, that's all, um, that's listed under my report. Uh, I do have comments on some agenda items further down on the list, but with respect to my specific report. I think that's it unless the board has anything specific of me at this time.
I have none at this time. Anyone else?
No.
Hey, thank you.
Okay, uh, Engineers Report. All right, thank you, Pat.
Thank you.
First item, uh, under my report for this evening's regarding the Winona Lakes, uh, Bridge Update, uh. Uh, pretty short one, say a couple of things. Uh, since our last meeting, uh, notification letters have been sent out to the six property owners. Um. Uh, that we discussed at the prior meeting, Antinampton Estates about. Um. The provision of a temporary, uh, access easement to get to the wastewater tube plant. Um. Had some conversations with, uh. Mount Top Estates, uh, Property Owners Association and the residents. Um, uh, but nothing else really note to date on that, so we need to have those conversations with them. Um, you know, as they reach out or we reach out to them. Uh, the second item is just that we received notification, uh, from, uh, Winona Lakes that the board directors. As of this past weekend had approved, um, the repair to that bridge to move forward. Um, that they've signed. The associated contracts with the, uh, contractor that's going to be doing the work. Um, as of now, uh, what's been conveyed to us is that, that this repair work is supposed to initiate. Start in the middle of August, and they expect it to go until. The end of October. Um. We don't have any more details other than that as far as, uh, time of day that's been, you know, sent to us and writing our details on. The, the nature of the proposed repairs, just that, uh, they had approved that to move forward. Uh, again, this is an update we were receiving the past few days, so, uh, still remains an evolving. Uh, situation that we're working on. Uh, but that's all I have as of now on this. Uh, if there's any other questions from the board. On this item.
Um, I, I would say that in the spirit of cooperation, uh, we should certainly schedule a meeting. Uh, with Winona's board, um, so we can get up to speed and. You know, we, we can discuss, they can describe what their plans are and. You know, particularly because it, it has a significant effect on us. As far as the sewer plant and operating the sewer plant. In Winona, so I think. You know, since they're in the cooperative. Spirit, um, we should certainly reach out to them.
Sure. Would you like me to follow up with them?
Sure, yeah, I think that would be great.
Um. Yeah, again, uh, knowing that you will probably be fielding questions regarding it as well. Sure. About this stuff, so.
This is. Uh, this is Pat. Um. I, I read through that email. So, am I reading it correctly that they have a plan for a temporary? Road. Right-of-way to get, I mean, is, is, are we, are we aware of that? Do we know the specifics of where that's at?
No, no.
Actually, I believe the author of the letter just signed on. Just zoomed in.
From what I, from what I understand. Um. The, they don't, I, I believe they don't have any ingress or. Egress for residents, but they do have an agreement for firing EMS.
Okay.
That's the way I understood it.
Yeah, I think, I think it'll behoove everyone to find out exactly what he, what they're referencing there, uh, and I guess what the. You know, what the, the limitations or. Or, uh, parameters of that is.
Agreed.
Right, you say, you know, I don't know if it's evening or that's being scheduled right, but. You know, if an emergency situation arises that requires.
But that doesn't, that doesn't change the fact that. We have trucks and, and vehicles that have to access. The sewer plant. Um, that are beyond the ten-ton limit. So, you know, as far as firing EMS, that may be one thing, but. I mean, we certainly can't shut down the sewer plant for twelve weeks.
No, I, I think. The reason I was asking is if they already have, and maybe they don't, maybe they do, I, it looks like maybe. They may, but I think we should find out a little bit more about what that. Temporary access they have is, and whether it can meet, whether it would be able to meet the township's needs associated with the sewer plant as well.
Agreed, and, and that's why I say I think we should, again. Invite them to come to a meeting and, and, you know. Present what, what the plan is and, and we can have an open discussion.
Yep.
I can answer some of your questions if you wish.
Okay, Michael Vasten, you have the floor.
So I'm the president of Winona Lakes. Um, lucky me. Um, but, uh, you know, the, as far as the, uh. The bypass road, we've met with Benjamin. And I believe Michael, um, back in late February, early March about it. Um, we've, we've secured easements, um, on three properties. Um, and, um, we're in the process, or we were in the process of, um, getting the necessary permits. Or. Working towards getting the necessary permits from the EPA. And also, um, I believe some geothermal studies that needed to get done. However, we had to put that on hold at this moment to address the bridge issue. Now, one of the things that I just want to point out on the bridge is this is an emergency, this is a, this is. Damage that was caused by large trucks crossing this bridge. This is not something that, you know, is, is, you know, age-related or anything like that. I mean, it is. Uh, the bridge is fifty years old, but. Trucks crossing this bridge damaged the bridge significantly in April. Um, and ever since then, we've been focused, laser-focused on trying to get this bridge corrected, repaired, fixed. And get everybody back to business as usual. Um, and we've made significant progress in that area. Uh, and we're moving forward. My, my letter referenced these properties. Because I listened to your last meeting, and in the last meeting, you made reference to security easements for some properties, I believe in Mount Top and. Off of Clubhouse. Um, my, my only. Uh, it was sort of an idea I had, which was since we have the easements of these properties. If we want to partner and try to get this bypass road built quicker. Um. You know, we should talk about that, right? We want to partner with the township and, and work together. And this just sounded like an opportunity to do so. And that was the, that was the gist of my letter. However, if it's too difficult, then, then you need to move forward with your own easement, right?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear your last sentence.
I said, if, if it's too difficult to do that, um, and you want to move forward with the easements you were talking about. That's fine. Uh, it was just a, it was just a suggestion. That, you know, Winona Lakes and the, and Middle Smithfield can work together to try to get. You know, a bypass road built, which would benefit both you and I, right? I mean, it, it's my association and also Middle Smithfield. Um, and that was just an idea. So that, that's, that's sort of where we stand right now. And thanks for your time, appreciate it.
When, when you say work together, what, 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 under one, what, how you, what do you mean by that? Not physically do the work together?
Sorry, I, I'm not familiar with Zoom and it's giving me a problem. Um, no, it was just an idea, since we have the, the easements. Um, you know, we, we, we want to build this road together, so, you know, if you want to partner in building the actual road and sharing the cost to build the road. That's an opportunity. Um, you know, I, I, I'm not sure if there's opportunities to get exclusions from or exceptions from. Um, certain permits that we need to get. Um, again, all, all, all ideas off the top of my head, but, you know, that, that. I would, we were trying to do before this accident occurred. Which was to build this bypass road and then do the bridge, and it would give everybody the ability to come in and out of the community.
Well, again, I, I think it, it, it would be beneficial for yourself and or, you know, some of your board members to come in and speak with us because. Um, there, there seems to be a misunderstanding. Of, of what the limitations that the township has. Um, I mean, we certainly. Uh, would not be constructing a road inside, inside a, a, a development. Um. For, for expedience sake, I mean, that, that's not what the township taxpayers expect. Um, nor could the township forego any permits that would be required. So I'm not sure exactly. Um, you know.
Well, Michael, it was just, it was just an idea.
I understand, and I, you know, but again, it's great, it's an idea, but I think if, if you came in and we can discuss these things, um. Because, again, you know, the township is experiencing, uh, you know, some significant expense. Trying to maintain that, that sewer plant back there. Because, because we have, you know, trucks. That are in excess of the ten tons, so. Um, that presents a, a significant problem.
Yeah, no, I'm aware of that, and, and, you know, it's, it's an inconvenience for our, for our commu, our, uh. Owner members also, you know, and like I said, we've been laser-focused trying to get this done. I mean, it's not easy. Trying to repair or replace a bridge in six months either, you know, so. You know, it's a, it's a work in progress, and we apologize for any inconvenience to the township, um, but, you know, again, this is an unexpected event.
Uh, one, one thing I just want to add to what Mike said, too, is, uh, my understanding is so the wastewater operator. I believe is modifying their. Uh, approach to accessing to and from the plant to abide by the ten tons. I just want to make that clear, like. They, they, the township is already incurring the cost for, uh, you know, multiple trips as opposed to what would have been done. Uh, much more straightforwardly previously. Uh. I don't think I said, one, one quick question for you, Mike, because you kind of referred to something that occurred in April. Are you able to? I don't know, I guess, uh, one, one quick question for you, Mike, because you kind of referred to something that occurred in April. Are you able to kind of explain that? That's the first I've heard that there was something material that occurred in April that was a bit more of the catalyst for all of this is.
Well, the, the whole cause of, you know, the whole cause of the ten ton weight limit was because there was damage done to the bridge. Um, it was not, you know, something we just, you know, came up with. Because, you know, the, the, the bridge is fifty years old. I mean, um, we had an inspection done in February, uh, from our engineers. Um, as we do annually, um, but, you know, and that, and that was, uh, that passed. And there was just some significant damage done back in April, so, which is when we contacted you guys, uh. You folks and, and told you about the, the weight limit change. Um, it's not something. It's not something advantageous to anybody, believe me. Um, it's, it's really trying to be. As cautious as we can to keep that bridge open for our residents.
Right, this is the same, this is the same bridge replacement project that you're talking about that was presented over two years ago, correct?
Uh, I'm not sure it was presented to you two years ago, Michael, I'm sorry.
Your, your property manager had come to the township.
Had previously approached it. I'd kind of mentioned back in, I think, twenty-three. That this was coming down the chute. I was, I, when I talked to the, um, engineer from McClair and. I think when he did this inspection in April, he made no reference to one done in February. He had mentioned one that was done maybe five years prior. I, I didn't remember that in his report. So that's just, that was just interesting. So they did an inspection in February. They did a second one in April after some type of acute, so then you're saying this isn't a chronic deterioration of the bridge, there's something. Uh, that more rapidly occurred. That basically caused you guys concerned to have a, a additional inspection done. Um, okay, all right, also.
Uh, it, it's not something that we, that we just pull out of the ad and say, you know, our weight limit just changed, believe me. It's not something that, like I said, is advantageous to anybody. It's something, you know, that, these things occur and we have to address them. And, uh, Winona Lakes is addressing it.
Okay, well, um, I mean, we, we've asked Ben to reach out, um, I mean, so you're, you're, uh. Hearing in advance, but, you know, to, again, to, we'd like to invite you in for more of a discussion, you know, the workshop, um. And then perhaps we can pull in, you know, the building department or whatever, um, see what we can do as far as. Understanding the project and, and maybe there's ways that we can help you expedite it, but, you know, again, we, we could not. Forego any permit requirements or, or, or certainly couldn't assist construction.
Yeah, thanks, thanks for sending the update. Oh, that's, uh, helpful information. And then I have spoken with Wayne Gross, uh, from RPR. He had reached out to me a few weeks ago as well. Uh, asking basically the same question about like what, what essentially could be waived and anything like that. Uh, you know, I take a lot of our initial comments when this was presented back in late February, he said it was. Um, largely dealt with like road geometry and safety. I think since this was intended to be used for emergency access and then even in the long term. I think the intention was to keep at least one of the lanes there. Uh, with the extent of the project that's proposed, we're over an acre or so. Uh, I mean, I, I'm not speaking on behalf of the board here. I expressed to Wayne that I personally. Wouldn't have an issue necessarily with deferring stormwater. I realize you guys were planning to propose that within the advancements, that's something that would have to get worked out from a geotechnical standpoint. Um, but there's not really anything else that I see that can be waived on our end, and I don't know if you've reached out to the conservation district, but. Given the size of the project, they have, they get involved from an NPS permitting standpoint, so I'm not sure. Wayne or, uh, it was Amy, I think, with them, if any of them have had conversations with them. On how that would get handled if they offer an emergency NPS permit to expedite on their end. Um, but, uh, you know, we're, we're not the only. Uh, entity that has a, a state review on this, if that makes sense.
Understood, uh, and, and as I stated right now, our, our focus is getting this bridge operational. Not operational, but getting back to BAU, so you don't have any issues in, in getting your trucks across. And, uh, you know, we can start, you know, having our residents get back to normal also, so. Um, that, that plan is what I outlaid. In my email to you, uh, Michael and, and, um, Benjamin. So I will keep you up to date, uh, as we move forward, uh, this, you know, we'll, we'll be. Fully transparent with you, um, on, on our progress and any delays that we encounter.
Okay, Mr. Vasta, you received a question in the chat about where, where is the road that you were proposing?
Um, it, I believe it's off of, uh. View, view court, is it? I'm not sure, but it goes out to Norman Court from, from Clubhouse.
Like Curvew, Curvew?
Uh, Curvew, that's it, Curvew, sorry. I think it goes from Curvew, which is off of Clubhouse, out to Norman Court. And it's, it, the, all the, all the easements are filed with the township. And again, right now, right now, that's, that's on hold, so we can get the, the bridge corrected.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I appreciate your time again, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Hold on a second.
Uh-oh.
And you got permission? So, uh, one of the persons on chat is asking if you received permission from all the property owners. For the road that you are proposing. From Curvew to Norman Drive.
We, we received, where we're building a road, we received approvals and, and signed easements.
Okay, any other questions? All right, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
All right, thank you. Are we ready to go on to Marshall Square?
Uh, sure, uh, Michelle, you want to give an update on this or do you want me to do?
You can do.
Okay, okay, sounds good. Um, so, uh. There's a, a letter from the, uh, planning commission, uh, dated, uh, from July twenty-first, uh, basically stating that at their. Uh, last meeting last Thursday. Uh, that they had made the following recommendation regarding the Marshall Square Shopping Center Land Development Plan. Um, that, uh, the applicant had emailed the township at home eight thirtieth. Um, basis stating the applicant has withdrawn any plans for further expansion of the strip mall. And the timeframe for the board supervisors to act, uh, was basically by the August twenty-seventh, uh, twenty-twenty-five. Uh, current deadline for them, uh, to make a decision. Uh, so. Uh. I think at this point, the, uh, motion to, I guess, accept that withdrawal request and then. Michelle, has there been any updates on the payment of any outstanding SPRO? Okay.
None.
Okay. Was there anything required on that front?
Yes.
Okay.
They still owe the township.
Sorry, I meant required of the, the board on that matter. Is there anything else that's needed?
That would be something for Pat.
Okay.
Yeah, so my understanding is, is the board considering action this evening with respect to. Denying the plan based upon the latest engineer review letter with the understanding that we're still gonna proceed with. Uh, following up with them on paying the outstanding professional service fees?
Yes, I think it's ripe for action now, unless anyone objects to it.
Well, they're withdrawing the plan.
Right.
Gonna, we're gonna deny planning or withdrawing?
We're not denying, we're just acknowledging the area.
No, they're withdrawing the plan.
Okay, yeah, that, that's what I had said last meeting, but I guess there was some concern that it was just via email and they haven't. Followed up in a response to that yet. I'm, I think we're okay either way. I just was under the impression this is the direction the township wanted to go.
I see no.
I think, yeah, I think the planning commission, the way they, they had structured it was basically a motion to just acknowledge their request for withdrawal.
Right.
So.
I would make that motion.
Second. Their comments or questions? Yes.
Are we dealing with the old owner or is this a new owner?
No, this is the same owner. They came in, the, the current owner. Uh, that had a, a plan for a lot of, you know, the, the, the retail stores and the self-storage and they're withdrawing that.
Uh, still that light pollution noise coming out of, I still got some conflict. I can come every week and sell out of porn.
I'm sure Mark would love to see you.
I'm sure he would, both.
That's it. There's been a motion, a second, any other comments or questions?
Yeah, there is, uh.
Yes, I mean.
I just wanted to provide, uh, the firsthand reference point as to the amount of, uh, debris and trash that is continuously accumulating there. You drive down technical lane and I do, uh, you know, there's like. With, uh, you know, airflow of. Paper trash is beyond.
Yeah, I think good truth.
Well, we've had some success.
Thank you.
I, I must say, we've had some success working with other.
They were good for a while.
Not them specifically, but some other ones who've had some good success with, with a friendly letter. Asking them to be good neighbors and, uh, looking out for their neighborhoods, so, well, we'll get something out of them.
Have they ever received any friendly?
Uh, uh, I'm saying that we may have done something before there, but I'm thinking of some other properties in the last couple of months that we've had some success. Work.
Well, they were good for a while. I had a girl ask them over on the property. And pick up the debris that was blowing over. Oh, she busted quit. No, it's, it's constant. I, I just walked over to my stepson's today in my door. And there's lottery ticket and all kind of debris back in my door. I'm thinking, I don't buy that. So. I don't know.
We will, we will start the dialogue. We'll start the dialogue.
Especially since it's for sale. I would think that they would want it, especially since it's for sale. I would think that they would want it to look nice.
You would think, but. Right there now, tonight, and you'll see garbage all around.
I know, I, I, I frequent a couple of the businesses there and just. Roll my eyes when I walk up to the curb and see stacks of cigarette butts there.
Well, the butts, but that's little, but I'm talking.
That, that can all be cleaned up. I've been in retail for a long time. I know what a building can look like to put a little effort into it.
Because every time I know, I have to go clean up every, everything before I can go.
Thank you.
Wonderful.
Uh, thank you, Reg. Any other, uh, comments or questions?
Just to, to Joyce's point, I don't know, I mean, if you wanted to go back and look at their land development, um. And see if they're required to put a fence, but if they put up, you know.
There is a fence there.
But if they put up, like deer fence.
A net, not me, but a net between the edge of the fence.
The fence that Debbie not put up.
Right, if they put a deer fence.
To the end.
They put a deer fence up.
Right.
A little bit further.
Right, it'll catch.
Stop, yes.
We had proposed that to them before.
No.
It didn't happen.
But no, it didn't happen.
No.
So.
Make them do it.
All right, uh, any other comments or questions? All in favor? Okay, personal home, a personal care home land development thing.
All right, uh, so regarding this land development plan at, uh, the planning commission's last, uh, meeting. Um, they had, uh, made the re- recommendation to deny the land development plan due to unaddressed issues being resolved based on. Uh, our office's, uh, review letter, uh, from last March, the March fifteenth, twenty-twenty-four. Uh, the deadline, uh, on the timeframe for the board supervisors to make a decision, as currently set for August thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five. Um, I think I'll just add to that as well, I had. My understanding is, I believe there's been stuff going on with PennDOT, but that has really been the extent of. Any type of feedback that we've gotten. I know Michelle has reached out several times to their engineer for status update and they're really, there hasn't been anything. Else of no, uh, on really any items, uh, from the, again, review letter from fifteen months ago, so.
Didn't, didn't we get a response, Michelle, from the planning commission? From the owner?
Um, the email that I got. Yes, it said that they did receive a grant from PennDOT for fifty thousand dollars, which was a drop in the bucket. And they were not sending anyone to the planning commission to discuss the plan because that would cost additional money on their part.
Okay.
So this looks, uh, uh, according to the recommendation of the planning commission, which Mark you sit on. Did you want to make this motion?
Sure, motion.
Okay, so the motion is to deny the land.
I have planned to address issues being resolved based on the patch pending review letter day, March fifteen, twenty-twenty-four.
Yeah, you know, second, any comments or questions?
Yeah, do we know if they're operating? They have a sign right on two oh nine that.
That's, that's one there.
Right, but do we know if they're operating?
I, I don't know personally.
As a personal care home or a short-term rental? Because they received a permit for that. And they were inspected for that.
Where's the location of this?
Um.
Guess those houses.
Right, right behind, yeah.
House in the back?
Yeah, behind more, starting there.
Behind Malls.
Yeah. Hmm.
Okay, uh, so a motion, a second, any other comments or questions? All in favor? You have anything else, Ben?
No, that's all I have, and it's the board's only questions that are ours.
No. Thank you. Um, okay, that brings us to old business. So we have the revitalized two oh nine grant application for Richard's Tree Farm. Uh, you might remember, the board had this packet before we accepted the packet. Uh, it's gone under legal review. We were missing one component of one of the three quotes. And then that was provided as everybody had a chance to review.
I, I abstain from any review associated with this property.
Okay, uh, any other comments? I see Pat is on. If there are no comments, I will make a motion to, uh, preliminarily approve. This grant application for Richard's Tree Farm.
Sure.
Any comments or questions?
For what song?
So he is, uh, the total project cost is nineteen thousand four hundred and forty dollars based on the lowest quote. The grant, so the township splits it with the, uh, business owner who is applying. It's up to a fifty percent grant amount. So the township would provide upon successful completion and inspection of the project. Nine thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars. Thank you. Sure, and then just as a reminder, this is a reimbursement grant, so that means that the business owner must do the project. Pay for the project, uh, have the project inspected. Before they receive any funds from the township. And again, this is all made possible by the American Rescue Plan, so it's none of your tax dollars. So, all right, great. On the, um, I, I can't remember if I did that part. Okay, uh. Next, we are up to new business. I believe you have a, something there.
Yeah, make a motion, authorize entering an agreement capital coding, the insulation in building B.
All right.
Any comments or questions?
Yes, uh, this is Pat, just confirming, this is, uh, this is a Co-Stars contract, correct?
Yes, it is.
And, and just confirm that it's prevailing wage, um, with the, the labor.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I would hope so, and this is for the insulation part, not the roof part.
Roof is right down, right?
I don't know, just clarifying for here, so insulation, seventy-nine thousand dollars.
Yeah.
For that, the entire building.
The what building?
The garage.
Back here?
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Yeah, it needed a a new roof. It's a.
Save a lot of money on the machine.
Yep.
Okay. So there's been a motion and a second, all in favor, all in bye. And then the next, I believe, is for parks.
And make a motion to waive the fee for Nutrure, I don't know how to say it.
Nutrue fit.
Nutra fit kids.
Yeah, they're used to the pavilion. All second. Any comments or questions?
No.
All favor?
Make a motion to waive the fee for East Stroud Road High School North, they have like pavilion.
All second. Yes?
Well, and.
What question?
We got a question.
So, I'm wondering why if waiving the fees, yeah, if you charge everybody else, why?
Because if they're not up.
I'm glad to see that the pavilion is getting so much use.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions?
All in favor.
All in favor. Yeah, they blew up on pool passes too, since last year. We've given out a lot of pool pass. All right, so now unfortunately, we had the representative to the Smithfields, the li- library of this, the representative of the Smithfields, Smithfield and Middle Smithfield to the library board representing the library of the Smithfields unfortunately had to resign. So the first motion would be to accept the letter of resignation from Jason Phillips.
Second.
Any comments or questions? All in favor? Okay, and then we did have an applicant who has remained interested in this position since the first time she applied. So I would make the motion to accept Kristen McCune as the representative of the Smithfields, maybe the library of, for the library of the Smithfields to the Eastern Road Public Library.
Sure.
Any comments or questions?
I had her at the Smithfield meeting when she's very excited about doing this and becoming involved.
Yeah, we we've met her a couple of times because she also came to an economic development committee meeting and all of that, so. So thank you for your comment. Uh, any other comments or questions? All in favor or not? Okay, so this would be something that Pat has been working on in conjunction with the sewer department. I would like to make a motion to authorize with proceeding with the sheriff's sale filings against four properties with delinquent sewer accounts and authorize the township to issue the five thousand dollar filing fee for each of these four properties, which we totaled twenty thousand dollars.
Second.
Uh, any comments or questions? All in favor or not?
Thank you.
Thank you for all the hard work. Firm has done on these past due accounts. Uh, the next item is to authorize the amount equal to the employee employer contributions to the pension plan for supervisor only, whom I'm assuming is abstaining. And the interest on the employer's contributions to be transferred to the plan's municipal reserve account to be used for future costs associated with the plan as set forth in the July first, twenty twenty five correspondence from PMRS.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Uh, all in favor?
All.
I am Mark abstains. Uh, and the next motion for housekeeping uh, is to authorize the issuance of a reimbursement check to supervisor only for his employee contributions to the pension plan plus interest from the general fund in accordance with the July first, twenty twenty five correspondence from PMRS in relation to his removal from the plan.
Second.
Any comments or questions?
Yeah, sounds like we're bringing Mark up to speed on something, but what, yeah, what what is this? I understand what I see here, but was it something that newly was approved?
Actually newly disapproved.
So so Mark is coming off of the employee pension plan, and this is the housekeeping we must do to do that. And it's also retroactive.
Uh huh.
Uh huh.
Housekeeping.
Yeah.
Housekeeping.
Yeah, yeah, the board, this, this was resolved.
Now you got the lawyer talking.
So the board, the board, the township realized that this needed to be corrected probably earlier this year. It just took this long to to clean up the housekeeping with PMRS. This is kind of closing the gap or closing the loop, uh, the tail end of cleaning the whole process up. It's authorizing, I mean supervisor only has been removed from the plan and now it's authorizing the repayment to him of his contributions and the township's contributions are being maintained in the plan for future costs.
And the removal is based on our or the how that?
It was a issue with interpretation of the plan documents that was clarified this year.
Okay.
Um, where Mark or supervisor only was not eligible for the pension plan. Is it fair enough?
Yeah.
Yep.
In order to clarify these things.
Uh, yeah.
It'd be full time.
Yes, you have to be full time in order to qualify for the pension.
It was not written as clearly as that.
Right.
It was much more.
Some old auditors not insured. So the.
Yeah, we spoke.
And years ago.
So there's been.
But I'm just hoping the building. Well. Oh, we'll get my man to go.
All right, so there's been a motion, a second, and some clarification. Are there any other comments or questions? All in favor? And for public comment, I would once again encourage, we have a vacancy for a township auditor. So I would once again encourage those, perhaps those who had experience. Who have recently retired, two of whom are sitting in this room right now.
Whoever they may be.
Whoever they may be. Uh, so there is two parts to it. Number one is to be appointed to fill Zach's vacancy from the appointment time to December thirty first of twenty twenty five.
And who's presently?
But no, oh, you mean the other two? It would be Joel Laris and uh, oh, now you got me, and Pam Hudak. Pam Hudak chose not to run past this year, so that's why there are others that are now, uh, you'll see on the ballot in November. So the first appointment would be from the term when you are appointed this year till December thirty first of twenty twenty five. That's the first.
Got it.
The second part is if you are interested in continuing serving for that seat because we are in a municipal election year and we accepted the resignation within sixty days of a municipal election, that person now has to be on the ballot. So if you would like to continue, and it's not a necessity, but if you'd like to continue past December thirty first of twenty twenty one. You would, twenty five, you would have to contact your respective party to ask to be placed on the November fourth ballot.
Well, I'm just asking for a friend.
So it's part A. Okay.
What what does the physician want there?
Everything.
So because the township appoints a CPA to do the audit of the books, the actual audit. The only responsibility of the elected auditor is to represent the people and set the pay for any supervisor who also has an employee position with the township. So this way, the supervisor is not creating their own rate.
Very important.
Yeah, and you serve on a board of one of three. And how many times a year did you folks meet?
Well, ultimately, we met about three or four. And the workshop, we did review, we got a treasures report, and that's it.
And the hourly rate is now, somebody remind me, eighteen dollars an hour.
Newly.
Wow.
A newly newly elected auditor.
But it does preclude you from being on any other committee.
Like working on at McDonald's.
Okay, so I I would encourage somebody to do that. Now, does anyone have any other public comment? Yes, Ed.
What's the current status of your most fire?
Uh, we have all three fire departments down there as of four o'clock this afternoon. Um, as of six fifteen. There, there is no smoke apparent. They're still dousing it. I'll know more as soon as I get to make a motion to adjourn. That's what I know right now.
Was I spontaneous?
So.
We believe.
Still under investigation.
Yeah, we believe that one of the transformers beyond the facility may have sparked. And then, because the fire the the fire we thought made a bang of combustion because those piles do get hot. But it was so low and so far in the back. It it it's almost, you know, uncanny that it happened that far away. But we've been there, we were there yesterday when it was first noticed. We pulled the piles apart. Uh, we wet it down as best we could. It seemed to have been abating, not over. Um, but then it it reared up again during the middle of the night. Um, and then we've been down there since six o'clock this morning, just trucking material from the back of the yard to the front of the yard to break up, you know, piles and and to get a break in between where it's smoldering, where it's not. Um, I mean, again, I should have said that thank you to all involved. Uh, you know, we've had Marshall Street down there since six o'clock this morning with tankers. Then Bushkill came and and Shawnee came. Um, so far it's only closest pizza, but.
What are the watch force for the tankers?
Well, I mean, they're they're drawing water. I mean, there there's a hydrant over by Price Chopper, so um, they keep going back and forth down there to to fill up.
Yeah.
Um, I mean, it's taking a lot of water, but you know, sort of the nature of the beast. I mean, it's not out of control. I mean, it's not, I wouldn't, you know, it, everybody first things, you know, they think about it's Ciberini, but um, it's nothing like that from years ago. So just one of these things that we have to handle. And and I commend, you know, all the public works guys as well that, you know, are down there and you know, they they really came together and worked as a team and fire department got down there and they worked, you know, seamlessly as well, so. But that's all I know. If you want to talk to me in about a half hour, I'll have more. No. I'll call you anyway.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Yes.
Um, according to.
Amy, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, according to the minutes at the last meeting, there was going to be a little bit of research done regarding Steiner and the recently approved, I forget what we probably read this a little while ago. Um, but my question is, is there anything we can do about Steiner? Because I I mean, it's overrun now. And I understand that part of the plan for maintenance or for them to keep it there where they haven't maintained it. They're clearly not doing that. There's trash in the parking lot. I understand it's a real high score for anybody that's coming in the yard. I understand that it's for sale. I understand the limitations. But, um, I want, I guess my question isn't the last meeting. Has anybody reached out to them and asked them to cut the weeds, cut the grass, pick up trash? Do anything to make it a little bit more presentable for our community?
Yes, I believe another zoning inspection was done that mentioned all of those things.
Ten in total, ten items in total.
I'm sorry?
Ten items in total for Mark.
All right, so is there a sure period that they have to meet that? And if they don't, what, you know, what are our, what are our next steps?
They'll end up being fined.
So it's a fine, so can is there a possibility that the township can clean it up and build the owner?
That's actually a solicitor question because we had had that thought on some other other things.
So, so I'm not, am I familiar with this property? I'd have to follow up with me and Sean.
Yes, you are, but in general, since we go through a process when a property is dangerous and dilapidated and we pull the pull the property down and then lean the property. Uh, in general, the board was wondering if there was something that we could do where we could clean up a property and then like what would that process look like?
There is, there there's a process, but like everything, there's a process and I'd have to look exactly where Judy and Sean are or who's ever running with the enforcement item.
I have that, I have that, I'd be glad to share that, Pat.
I'm sorry?
I had, I had that communication and I'd be glad to share.
Okay, perfect.
Uh, Sean agreed the property is clearly a nice word. Right, zoning officers here on that. Uh, they're initiating ten citations. And at this point, we're going to see how the property owner responds to ten citations. They're pretty significant amount of money. I'm not going to go into how much here. I don't think it's necessary. The other option is to go after them under the dangerous and unsafe ordinance, building ordinance. However, the building did not appear to rise to that level. And he's not sure that we could get a court order to have the building demolished. So that's, that's where Pat comes in. That's the time. One step, yeah.
Thank you for that, I appreciate it.
Did you get all that, Pat?
Yeah, um. I'm gonna have to look, I mean, I'll have to look at her. Is that from Sean that you got?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I'll have to look into it. Um, but did I hear that correctly? He said he's issuing or he has issued a number of citations and he's waiting to see how they respond?
Yes, ten citations.
All at once?
Went out this this last week for all, all of them for the property main, for violations of property maintenance ordinance.
Okay.
And they have received letters going back. I don't know the exact date, but they had had letters from the zoning office. But these are now citations.
Okay, and I think you said that was under the property maintenance ordinance. In his review of the dangerous structure provisions, he didn't think it rose to that level?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, well, then I I think we let the timeframe run for the citations and take it from there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pat.
Hey, that's something.
Uh, Ed?
Just good after the road crew, it'll work again on my other pole road. It looks great and it's a lot safer.
Yeah, thank you. We'll be paving that this year. But we will be shutting the road down when we pave. Just try to keep them below sixty five is a challenge.
Kudos also for what was done to Upper Lake View. There were trees, so the cars had to duck under, so thank you on that.
Yeah, that's all part of our prep for paving, so. Thank you, and I will relay both to our road crew.
I posted it, I do like it.
Like, how do, how do we get an ear with PennDOT when it comes to a road like Tom X? I mean, there's a couple of spots on there where you're in a village and where you come to the bottom of the hill are the falls. They're just like watchwords.
Yeah.
Agreed.
I mean, it's most uncomfortable ride. I'm. I mean, it's most uncomfortable ride, I'm actually considering using Oak Road now to go to Kingdom Fair.
Right.
Instead of that road.
It, there's no easy access to PennDOT. And because you got channel thirteen here, I have to be careful.
Well, we're on YouTube also.
Right, so. We we've tried, we've tried to work as best we can with them, I think we do have a good working relationship with them. However. Any issue that comes up, whether it be a road, like for instance, we are, we've been actively pursuing them for the road. On Business Drive, when you come out of Perkins, that floods every time you get an inch of rain. They've taken it from construction, kicked it back to permits, kicked it back to construction. No one wants to take control of it and and handle it. And the problem with PennDOT is that if we do anything, we own. So if we were gonna, you know, if we milled and and, you know, paid Tom X, we would own. To return. And, you know, God forbid something happens, you know, it it's a liability until. Up until if we ever took over the road, then we can handle it, and we've done that. For instance, we did that with Sellersville, we took over Sellersville from two oh nine to Winona. Sands to bridges in between and and that we were able to improve. But it it, it's just, you know, you have to treat them with kid's gloves, quite honestly, I mean, you know, you try to be nice and. I try to be nice.
Channel thirteen's here looking for the camera.
Yeah, wow.
You know anybody at PennDOT, please have them call us.
Because they suck.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Pat.
Yep, have a good one.
Enjoy your vacation.
Thanks, bye.